Next up, we have SEPTA.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark, Transportation Committee Chair Johnson, members of City Council, and other guests. My name is Jeff Knappel, and I am honored to come before you today as the General Manager for the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, or SEPTA. I am joined by SEPTA Philadelphia Board Members Clarina Tolson, Executive Director of the Philadelphia Parking Authority, and Beverly Coleman, Assistant Vice President for Community Relations and Economic Development at Temple University. SEPTA is pleased to submit testimony supporting the Authority's 82.7 million fiscal year 2018 operating budget request and provide an overview on initiatives and milestones achieved during the past year. I believe you have copies of my complete testimony, and if you agree, I would like to summarize its content and get right to any questions you may have. Members of my staff are also with me today to help provide any additional information requested.
A man after our heart.
Thank you.
We agree.
As you know, SEPTA's operating budget is funded through subsidies from local, state, and federal governments, the Fairbox and other revenues. The city's $82.7 million contribution represents 6% of our total operating budget. The city operating subsidy enables SEPTA to meet its state legislatively mandated requirement to secure local matching funds to match state operating subsidy dollars of approximately $705 million. For the Authority's capital budget, the city's $4.5 million contribution will support a capital program this year of approximately $682 million. As such, SEPTA is able to advance and invest hundreds of millions of dollars in Philadelphia infrastructure and to advance priority projects, including the renovation of City Hall and 15th Street, concourse improvements, Broad Street and Market Frankfurt Line station accessibility projects at 40th Street, Air Transportation Center, and Susquehanna Dolphin, trolley modernization, SEPTA key, and real-time information to benefit the repartaining public. Council's continued support to allocate operating and capital funds in the city's budget is deeply appreciated. This year, SEPTA will continue to acquire new power transit vehicles, buses, and rail cars to replace vehicles which have reached or exceeded their useful life and to enhance system capacity. In calendar year 2017, SEPTA will accept delivery of 77 CCT vehicles. The Authority has awarded a contract for 25 battery electric buses. These buses will be deployed on SEPTA bus routes 29 and 79 in South Philadelphia. In May 2016, SEPTA awarded a contract to New Flyer Industries for 525 40-foot low-floor hybrid buses to be delivered over a five-year period with the first 90 buses to be delivered this summer. By 2020, more than 95% of SEPTA's bus fleet will be hybrid buses. In March, SEPTA's board approved the purchase of 45 multi-level coaches for regional rail operations and awarded a contract to CRRCMA. The first of the fleet is expected to be delivered in late 2019. In June 2016, 10,000 transit riders became early adopters in the first phase of the new SEPTA key card program. Key card holders were able to purchase either a weekly or monthly transpass at several SEPTA transit stations in the Market Frankfurt Line, Broad Street Line, and at our headquarters at 2234 Market Street. Since the program's launch, more than 105,000 SEPTA key cards have been purchased by riders and 55,000 senior cards have been issued. SEPTA is committed to supporting local businesses and the jobs they provide to our citizens. At council's urging and with the aid of many council offices, SEPTA has increased our outreach to invite more companies to bid on SEPTA work. We have added to our staff to register and certify more disadvantaged business enterprises, applicants, as well as women, minority, and veteran-owned firms. Over the last three years, SEPTA invested over $3.26 billion in projects and services. 38.5% of that total, or $1.25 billion, was awarded to businesses and employers in the city of Philadelphia. Our DBE program has been striving to raise the numbers of minority and women-owned businesses participating in our contracts. We have 465 currently certified DBE firms, of which 33% are Philadelphia-based. SEPTA consistently exceeds federal requirements for DBE participation, and in 2016, our federal DBE participation is 18%. As my submitted testimony states, SEPTA is building the future, one that is strong for the city, the region, our customers, and every SEPTA employee. 9,500 dedicated employees work to make the SEPTA system run every day. Our workforce is diverse and reflects our ridership in the communities we serve. 63% of our staff are minorities and 20% are females. 52% of our employees live in Philadelphia. One story I'm proud to tell is that of Mrs. John A. Franklin, a signal maintainer, trainee on the city side. In October 2016, she attended the SEPTA-sponsored Women in Trades event to attract women into non-traditional positions. As part of the event, she was able to take the signal maintainer's entrance exam. Ms. Franklin was homeless at the time. She was hired on February 13, 2017, into the subway elevated signal training program. The training program includes classroom theory and hands-on practical work out in the field. The training program duration is 12 to 18 months and includes various aspects of signal operation and circuits. She has completed the track safety and QPE, or Qualified Protection Employee Course. Ms. Franklin is currently in the track circuit module of the training course and is expected to be tested on that portion within the next two months. Last month, she earned a certificate from Orleans Technical and Residential and Commercial Electricity. She has secured an apartment as prepared to handle any challenges that come her way. Ms. Franklin has a good attitude and work ethic and is progressing well in her training. Before I conclude, I would like to take a moment to thank the members of council for giving SEPTA the opportunity recently to provide information on our comprehensive system safety program, customized community transit services, and our efforts to engage more Philadelphia and minority-owned businesses. We are also pleased to be working with the members of council to address issues throughout the city, including Philadelphia's transient populations, panhandling, and crime near SEPTA stations. During the last year, SEPTA has worked closely with the city as Philadelphia hosted the 2016 Democratic National Convention and recently the NFL Draft. SEPTA and employees are proud to support Philadelphia. Our employees act as ambassadors for major events and give back to the community by participating in Philly Spring Cleanup, Phil Abundance, and Toys for Tots, to name a few. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak about SEPTA accomplishments over the past year. City council's continued support of public transit through city matching funds for the Authority's capital and operating budgets is greatly appreciated. We will be happy to answer any questions the members of council may have.
Thank you, sir. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Got a couple of quick questions, and then I have to go to another event. Many Philadelphia residents have difficulties accessing work opportunities due to lack of transportation. I know we've had this conversation. Can you tell me what's in this budget that might assist those individuals, you know, reverse commuting and all the other assets?
As we've evolved things over the years, certainly for reverse commuting, we've been seeing a steady increase in regional rail ridership out to jobs outside of the city. Inside of the city, we continue to also work to modify routes, to publicize them. We extended one of the bus routes in Hunting Park in the last year, and I can remember getting an enormous thank you card for the residents. So as changing situations in employment develop, one of the great tools we have is our bus network to be able to deal with those changes quickly, as opposed to a rail network, which is pretty much going where it goes.
Okay, so, let me be a little more specific. And you and I have talked over the last couple of years about making sure that there's revenues in place to allow the individuals to go out to King of Prussia and Plymouth Meeting where all those job opportunities. Is there a significant level of funding in this budget for that type of activity?
There, if you're, are you referring to the, what was it, the PUP program?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Haver would be pretty upset if I didn't ask you about that.
Yeah, that's the particular program, and unfortunately, I think, the Commonwealth has dedicated $350,000 to that. I don't think the federal budget is accommodating much monies for those types of programs right now, unfortunately.
So meaning you're not, what are you doing?
And if we were to put money into the program, it would create a situation where we would have to ask for additional dollars from the city to keep our match working right. So we don't typically work that way.
It's not important enough to ask for additional support? I'm just saying, people don't have a way, and these tend to be people of the lower-income scale, so I'm just trying to not have to send you a letter in mid-fiscal year and ask you to please put some more money in the budget for this particular issue.
I know we worked last year to look at all available funds. We did make it clear that we would have to ask for additional funds, and if that's something that we should pursue, we can do that.
I mean, I can't guarantee you'll get it, but if you don't ask, you definitely won't get it.
Okay, understood.
All right. My next question is probably a basis for why we should put more money, advertisement. You guys are the masters of that, and I can't get our friends in the city to take advantage of all of the lucrative opportunities and contracts that you are. Where do we stand now in terms of our contracts with advertisers on SEPTA-owned property?
Right now, with intersection, it's a $150 million contract over eight years.
All right, that's a nice little chunk of money. All right, so, say that again, because I want some folks.
$150 million over eight years.
I can't get these people in the government, our government, to figure that out, yeah.
And we did appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on the urban panels and actually share some of the revenues from the digital signage.
Okay, that can help us purchase a lot of reverse commuting initiatives. All right, thank you. I'm actually going to turn it over because I got to get out of here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Greenly, you're actually up next, yes.
Just quickly, first, I just wanted to say thank you for your efforts. We've been working with your staff on the new Route 49 to get down to University City. I know there's still little tweaks to go, but I think it's, I think that'll be very beneficial. And also, for the work you've done on the issue in Suburban Station, I know that's been challenging for, you know, for a lot of people, but it sounds like what the plans will certainly be beneficial to everybody, both the folks who are down there, the business people, everything, so thanks for your efforts on that.
Thank you.
And just finally, I have to brag a little bit, I got my SEPTA key card here.
Very good. You're one of 105,000.
And just one question on that, and I know this will probably be down the road, but I noticed in New York with their MetroCard, every time you swipe it, like at the turnstiles, it shows how much is still left on it. Is that some plan down the road to do something with that? No?
No, we don't have that yet.
Okay, because I know you can look online or at the kiosks, but sometimes, you know, when it's right in front of you, when it's right in front of you like that, again, it's probably something down the road, but, yeah. All right, thank you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How do I thank you? Let me count the ways. I really appreciate, over the years, and I don't know if it's a trend, we're finding a better relationship with all our departments, but consistently through it, SEPTA has been there in our challenging times. You moved a million people or more to the parade for the Phillies, and we didn't have the kind of hitches that we normally had. Even when you were given defective product in the manufacturing phase, you managed to keep us rolling.
Keep going, right.
And so, I want you to know that that does not go unnoticed. We can't have a draft, we can't have the DNC, we can't win and have parades without SEPTA working with us, and obviously, it is the talented men and women that you hire, but it's some of your board members that have been consistently, you don't pay, you don't pay them, do you?
No, we do not.
Wow.
They get lunch.
Yeah, you pay them attention. So we appreciate you as well for what you do. A couple of issues that maybe you can help me with. Number one, thank you for the negotiations at the 52 turnaround. I know my guys in the 52nd Ward have religiously started attending your board meetings. Hopefully, you're feeding them lunch as well, because they come so consistently.
We are working to move that route into the new, we also recently got funds from the federal, received funds from the federal government to rebuild the WISIC and Transportation Center, and we're actually looking to bring the 52 into that location, which would really open up travel options for people and solve the issue at hand.
So someone could come as far away as Janey's District and Woodland Avenue and go all the way up, hit our target, go down to East Falls and have lunch.
Exactly.
So offer the, offer 225. You're not going up, right?
We are in July.
All right. Second thing I would like to ask you to help us with is, in certain parts of my district, Manny Unc, Roscoe, East Falls, Paradise, parking has become an extreme issue. And I wanted to know if you, your staff rode around with us and identified, and we appreciate that, remote parking sites that might be used off-hours to assist some of the residents, and if we could create an Uber-style pickup for them that might be a partial solution to a headache problem, not just plaguing my district, but I'm sure Councilman Greens, Councilman Johnson's district as well. Can you speak to that for a minute?
Parking is at a premium. We have partnered with Uber in a, kind of the fashion you talked about, out in the suburbs, but obviously, and we have some of the lowest percentages of parking to customers on our regional railroad in the country, so it is something that we're always working on, whether it's, you know, people see opportunities for us to get involved with, you know, potentially leasing or buying a property, or any partnerships like, such as Uber or others that we can do to get people, without having them have to park right at the station, is a good thing.
Transit-oriented development, whether on 60th Street or whether on, up on Main Street, Market to Main Street, we need to come up with a comprehensive plan on how people can take advantage of that, maybe adjust some routes that may give people access to your buses and trains. Station upgrades, such as the one in Winfield and others that we toured with your staff, do you know the status of them?
Both Winfield and Balla are going into construction this summer and probably would take less, a year or less than to do both of those stations. We also, at East Falls, I believe.
Yes.
That one's farther out. We're still looking at design work, and money will not be available for a number of years, but those other two stations, specifically Winfield, I know, I've talked with you before, is going to construction shortly.
Signage on those, and as much as we can get information about the time between rides makes life better for everybody. If there is a digital sign that gives a delay, that your train, your bus, may take another five minutes, you have time to go get that coffee, or, you know, you can get out of the rain, those kinds of amenities make us, and I'm not going to say Washington or New York is better, because they're not, I hate it when Denver got a national recognition on things we had done decades ago, but those kinds of little nuances, cleanliness, safety, and then information.
Winfield, just to go back a little bit, Winfield will actually have more parking than it does today. It'll also get the digital signs. We've been working on amenities. For years, we were in a pretty tough spot with, you know, and even now, we have a $5 billion backlog of assets to replace, but thanks to Act 89, we're really, we're really picking up good steam, and I think starting, we'll be starting to reduce that backlog number. But we know that we have to get some of the customer amenities, so we're working on really good real-time information for our customers now, Bus Railroad, Market Frankfurt, El Broad Street, all over.
And I know there's a jurisdictional problem. Thank you for the elaborate camera system that feeds into the real-time crime center, but on our regional rail, on our...
As we're renewing stations, we are putting cameras in them, and there's also some cameras going in for our fare collection project. So cameras are starting to proliferate out onto the railroad. Right now, we have 2,037 cameras in stations across the system.
Can you, and finally, and I'm going to pass it, Mr. Chair, at 60th and Market, we have a beautiful station. There is a built-out for a concession, whether it's donuts and coffee, or flowers and papers, it's right there. It has been vacant for five years, and I don't know if we're marketing it to entrepreneurs like Denise's Bakery, who might want a second location, or, and not as a donut shop, but a drop shop to buy donuts, that we could make that happen. We're about to invest a lot of money in that area and want that kind of amenity for the riders that catch the bus there.
Mr. Lund, who's in charge of real estate, is here, and he will give you an update.
Come on down.
He'll give you an update on that property. We can work with your office to see what's available.
For the record, he will follow up with me.
He absolutely will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to follow up on Councilman Jones's comment about the real estate in SEPTA, and do we hire an outside person to do the leasing for SEPTA's retail operations, or do we do that in-house?
We have a combination. We do, like at Suburban Station, we have somebody who brings in the tenants. Other places, we do it ourselves, but we are really taking a hard look at our real estate department right now and looking to increase the opportunities that we have. And really, the city is changing. There's a lot going on, a lot of positive things that may make, you know, things that we looked at in the past may not have been as beneficial. Now, they may be possible, just based on the way things are moving.
Right. I mean, this past week, I had the opportunity to walk through from 17th and Locust to 12th and Locust and the concourse through there, and I noticed that Broad and Locust is huge open space.
Right.
And I'm saying to myself, why are we not leasing that space to some coffee shop operator or whatever, having people down there, having activity?
Absolutely.
And I'm sure this is across the board where we have dead space.
I went up with my staff to New York and looked at areas exactly where they took the concourse and turned it into, you know, an underground city, and so we are looking at that. That whole South Broad concourse is definitely a moneymaker and something that we are working on now.
I mean, you go to New York, I think it's 29th and Broadway, there's a concept called Italy, unless you've seen it. It's a phenomenal concept of many, many different types of restaurant. Mario Batali is the operator of it, and it would be phenomenal to do an Italy version, underground, all different types of foods and chairs.
Yep, that's really what they had where I went in New York.
It'd be a great addition. All right, so I'm glad you're working on that, that's good. I have a few quick questions, you can give me brief answers. Just, status of repairs for the Market Frankfurt line cars, are you back to full service?
We're running about, we're usually running 20 trains a day at rush hour. We used to be up to 24. We will be working, we start the repairs on the 50-some cars that we found cracks in the middle of this month, and we'll work on them all the way through September. And as we go between May and September, you'll start to see almost, if you divided that time up, another train out on the line until we easily get back to 24, 25 trains where we used to be by September. There's crowding right now, but it's only usually when we go below that 20 number out there.
So, playing a Monday morning quarterback, looking back at what happened with those cars and the problems, how would we go about avoiding that type of situation in the future?
All right, believe me, after a year of both the regional rail and the Market Frankfurt cars, really, both instances were very much about how welded details were made on those cars. So what we've done is gone and hired an expert in welding, not just welding, manufacturing process, but also design, looking for good details to put on the cars. It's called the Edison Welding Institute. So as we go forward, they are involved with all of our new car procurements. We've already using them on two projects now. And one thing that I've also ordered our people to do is to go backwards and look at all the rest of our fleets, and we're doing special inspections to make sure that there are no more welding defects that get out of control.
Is this a third party that we're using to inspect them?
Yes.
So that if there was, just hypothetically, if, God forbid, a year from now, they had inspected something today, and it became a problem a year from now, would they have the liability?
It depends on the situation, but to some degree, yes.
Okay, that's good. Next question I have for you is, the new fare payment system, is that fully implemented at this point, or not yet?
No, it's moving along fairly far in the city. We hope to really have the city portion of the system done, City Transit Division this year, and then towards the end of the year, we move into the railroad.
So what do you think is the timeframe for having them both implemented?
Oh, it'll be by the beginning of 18.
Okay, good. Another question, do we keep records with regard to the average time between breakdowns of each bus and rail vehicle, and over the past 10 or 20 years, do you have any kind of measurement of how that equipment's been performing?
Yes, I mean, we call it mean distance between failures, and I watch that judiciously. It's up in my conference room with monthly results, and we go over it with our vehicle people. You know, when we see trends where we start to come down below our goals, we will meet and push to get the numbers back up. I will tell you that some of the fleets now are getting older, and it's difficult to keep up with them. It's also difficult for parts when you get older cars, but it's a metric that we pay very close attention to.
So if I looked at 10 years ago or 20 years ago, where do we stand today on that metric?
I would say we're much better than that timeframe, but there are, it's always a little bit different, too, because it's tough. They probably did their accounting a little bit different than we do today.
Okay, thank you. I'll come back to you in the next round. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Wanted to ask a few questions and follow up a little bit on the Council President's question regarding reverse commuting. And so from my understanding, that in order to be able to provide dollars towards reverse commuting with either Philadelphia Unemployment Project or other initiatives, you would have to make additional requests in your dollars from the federal government. Is that correct?
Yes. You know what, Rich Burnfield, the Deputy General Manager, can really kind of discuss the whole issue of the reverse commuting.
Please identify yourself.
Rich Burnfield, Deputy General Manager. Currently, the Commonwealth provides over $350,000. That is provided to SEPTA, and those dollars are then directed to the Philadelphia Unemployment Project. Prior to the Commonwealth providing those funds, there was a program at the federal level that was the Job Access Reverse Commute Program, JRC, that was eliminated several years ago, and the Commonwealth stepped up and provided those funds. But we would certainly be willing to consider increasing our request for the local match for the city, if the city was willing to consider that for a reverse commute program.
Is it possible to ask for additional requests from the Commonwealth?
The Commonwealth, we've had discussions with them. They... They are looking at introducing a vanpool pilot next year, and we've had some preliminary discussions with the Commonwealth on that.
Okay. Thank you. On page five of your testimony, you made reference to the Bus Rapid Transit Project on the Boulevard. What's the current status of that, of that initiative?
I didn't quite hear the last part.
The current status of that initiative? I know you issued an RFP some, about a year, two years ago, in reference to studying...
Well, the city's doing a study. SEPTA is partnering with the city for a, a bus route with less stops called Direct Bus out there. That should be out in service this fall on the Boulevard.
So that's, you said that service will be established this fall?
Yes.
Okay. And, and could you give me some perspective on how that type of service will work?
Basically, there's fewer stops. Michael Carroll's here.
I was gonna say, I see Mike, Mr. Carroll, who you're probably on it. Please identify yourself.
Michael Carroll, Deputy Managing Director, Office of Transportation Infrastructure Systems. Yeah, we're pretty excited about this. It's a good reflection of the very close coordination and partnership that we've enjoyed with SEPTA for my time here in the city. And the Office of Transportation Infrastructure System is taking a pretty, pretty much a lead role in pushing this forward. I'm happy to say that we put out for advertisement, and this Wednesday, we'll be getting the bids back for the construction of bus plazas, where we're gonna be putting these stops. There's gonna be 10 stops total. The service is gonna be completely branded to be recognizable, is what we're calling Direct Bus, and this implementation of it, we're calling it the Boulevard Direct Service. The objective is to make sure that the bus stops at every stop, but because there's 10 stops between here and the city line, that service is gonna be much faster. And so what we're trying to do is provide a fast, reliable service. People know that there's gonna be buses every few minutes, and when they get there, you know, they don't have to run to catch the bus. And this is a issue we've had, a, a number of unfortunate incidents on the Boulevard, people trying to run across the Boulevard because they didn't want to have to wait for the 14 bus to arrive. So all around an upgrade in the service, and, you know, if there's more details that you need, we can provide that to you, but I'm happy to ask you more questions as well.
Thank you. I also wanted to talk about some of the issues that have come up. I know Councilman Bass had hearings on this issue regarding CCT and the role of Chair to Council Command Disabilities and People with Special Needs. This issue has come up on a regular basis. Can you talk about some of your current efforts? I know it's a, a concern, one, and now, not only making the transportation more reliable, but also educating the users on how to best use on the service. So can you talk about your efforts coming out of that hearing?
In recent years, we did have trouble with a couple of the third-party providers. One of the lessons we learned was that to have more providers would be better. Some of the bigger contracts, when they got into trouble, it, it was hard to pull them back out of the trouble. So we've now increased the number of providers in the city, and that has really helped. We also advised those agencies, those companies to provide living wage to their employees. They have really stabilized, and so their workforce is coming to work. That, that was an issue and a problem, and that was affecting a lot of our on-time performance. We've also worked with the people that utilize the service, and there are, we've made sure that people are following the rules. It's, it's a tough thing to do, but when people cancel trips that they, at the last minute and do things, we kind of had to work to get some discipline to the, to the people using the service. And that has really helped as well, because we would be sitting waiting for somebody outside, and they didn't let us know that they had canceled the trip. So that has also helped. So what we've seen in recent months is our on-time performance has been steadily improving, and the number of complaints going down. So not satisfied, though, to just be in a situation where there's less complaints. What we've, what I've also asked for is, and we do this periodically of different aspects to SEPTA's service, we have a third-party independent company coming in to try to look at our CCT program and see how it matches up with other similar programs across the country. Opportunities for improvement, opportunities for, for, you know, more efficiency, and that is going on right now.
Based on the information you just referenced, can you provide the Chair with that type of analysis of your ridership and improvements that have been made in the CCT program compared to previous years?
Sure, we can, we can provide that.
Finally, to wrap up my questions, I know SEPTA's recently moved to using electric buses for some of their fleet. I'm curious on, you made the distinction to use electric vehicles as opposed to CNG, and I'm curious on what the analysis was and how you made that determination?
To go all-electric versus CNG? Basically, for, for SEPTA, we, we did look at the CNG bus situation, but it was a very difficult situation for us in terms of infrastructure. Some of our garages are located in very dense environments where we really don't even have enough space for the operation that we have right now. I think of our Allegheny Bus Garage, which has got row homes on three sides and a school on the fourth. So really, for us, CNG was tough in terms of having the space to provide the facilities for it. The locations that we had of, of all of our garages, only two really were the kind of location that made sense to even pursue it, but there were large infrastructure costs. So for us, we've kind of jumped over CNG and gone to the all-electric. And what's really exciting is just even since we made the procurement go through and issued a purchase order, they've already developed batteries that will allow us to, to run the entire shift, which is pretty much eight to 10 hours. And so we're really, you know, gonna be excited to get these buses and, and give them a, a chance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. And just for everybody here, after we're through the questioning here, we're going to take a short break before we get to community college. Councilman Heenan, you had, had a question?
Hello?
Yeah, there you go. You're all right.
I'm joking. It was a joke. So thank you for coming in, and I just have a question. I don't want to repeat anything in regards to capital investments and the ratio between the city and, and the surrounding suburbs. The transportation, how are we, so, two questions. All right. One, how are we tracking the additional monies over the 10 years for the new transportation bill?
Do you wanna talk that, Rich?
I mean, it was, and I stated, I make the statement, or I raised the question because it was a huge lift for the Commonwealth, all right? But SEPTA, in its, in its regions, or, you know, it's a $5 billion capital, all right, over, over course of time.
So, so we had $2 billion backlog in vehicles, $3 billion in infrastructure. And we showed a map back at the time that, that the funding bill was gonna pass, or where they were trying to pass it, that showed the, the rail network would shrink. Basically, what we're doing now is try to prevent the shrinkage of our, of our rail network. And we're, we're doing well. We're spending at the, the rates that we have, and which was a pretty fast turnaround. But I think the true test is whether we start pulling back the, the backlog number. And we have a new study going through again this year to update it and start to see whether we're pulling back the number.
That, that'd be great. I mean, would it, would it be too much of a trouble when you, you know, have a draft findings of, of your study, maybe to, you know, let the Council President know?
Sure.
So we can get, get briefed a little bit on it?
Mm-hmm.
Because, and I, and I say that, one, I was, I was a part of the...
That was a great, great situation.
The coordination, you know, from the state, at, at the last minute, right? And nothing, nothing was, it, it was DOA for the longest time, and then we were able to, we're able to get it passed, all for the right reasons. I mean, to create an economic change.
It's, it's made a huge difference at SEPTA. Myself, being a structural engineer and watching the things that we had to just kind of patch and hold together for years, it's just, it was a wonderful moment to be able to have funds to go after a lot of things and, and to really start to, to make the system stronger. We really were in danger of having the system start shrinking. So it's, it's unbelievable, and thank you for your and everyone else's efforts in passing that bill.
I was just, I was just one of many, all right, that, that was, you know, champion, you know, the need for additional funding for, for our transit, public transit and transportation systems. You know, with, with that being said, you know, how, how, so we have a similar situation here with the school district, with rebuild, where you have new revenue coming in, and you have a backlog of capital investments, investments. So, you know, we're trying to determine what are, what is the priority of backlog and/or taking some of the new revenue and putting it towards, towards some of the things that we really want to, not only be in compliance with, but some of the things that we couldn't do because we were just maintaining.
The, the priority for Act 89, and it was clear from the state and from the legislature, was to be for state of good repair. So we really are working to get that backlog number down as opposed to doing things that will, you know, kind of improvements or betterments. But at the same time, some of the time when you do a state of good repair project, you've gotta look forward and make sure that you do it with an eye towards the future. So we are, we are doing certain things when we, when we rebuild or replace assets. For instance, you know, buses, we're buying more articulated buses. Rail cars are coming now for the first time, multi-level cars. So as we're replacing some of the infrastructure, we, we definitely are doing with an eye towards capacity. One of the things that's been very tough for us is not only to have an absence of capital funds, but on some of our network, our rail network, having incredible increases in ridership. The railroad's gone up over 50% since 2000, the Market Frankfurt Line, 41% since 2000, and the Broad Street subway, 29% since 2000. So it's tough. We're trying to balance, you know, just repairing, replacing things, but also looking with the capacity issues that we need to address.
And that's, it's good to hear. So, you know, we appreciate that. With, a couple of years ago, I think there was still some stimulus monies in your capital. I think it was like a combination of your, which, a combination of your annual capital, which, which is what, roughly around $200 million, $250 million?
Our capital program, I think, was 680, or around 680 for next year.
Is that included?
150 million of it is borrowed, we're planning to borrow. There's different, different years that will go up different rates, but at, at, at certain points in the past, we were down as low as $300 million. So to be double that is, is really a, a big improvement for us.
Is there still an appetite to invest in some of the planning that went towards extending the subway into the Navy Yard?
PennDOT is looking at that, and they released their findings through the summer and into the fall. I'm also, have people looking at, at SEPTA, we really need to go to eight-car trains on the Market Frankfurt Line. That would be a 33% increase in capacity. And if you look at all the development that's going on along the Market Frankfurt Line and the, and the transformation that's occurring all up and down that line, we have to be ready for that. So there's, there's a bunch of projects that are getting discussed that are not real, they're not state of good repair. They're really working to meet the, the changing needs of the region. And certainly, South Broad is one, longer trains on the L is another. There are a bunch of things, our Trolley Modernization Project that, that, that we're looking to do that are, kind of go beyond just state of good repair, but are, are really betterments for our region.
I think with the new administration in DC, politics aside, you know, the one thing I think, I believe is all common ground, and that's the investment in, in infrastructure and, and transit, you know, public transportation. So there might be a good opportunity to have more resources in for a big dig or, or something like that while still maintaining what you're trying to accomplish.
Exactly. And we were ready for the stimulus, and we're preparing projects now, even though we don't have the funding available, in case the administration does make significant amounts of infrastructure money ready.
Good. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few more questions, but the City Hall Rehabilitation Project, which is like 131.5 million, according to your testimony, City Hall and 15th Street, how's that progressing, and when do you think that's gonna be completed by?
Well, 15th Street's in construction right now. It's been in for a couple of months now. We had to, had to wait for the, the Papal Visit to go by. That one will be done in 2018. I kind of, originally, we talked about doing City Hall and 15th at the same time, and there was just too much construction in too small an area. It's very tough getting materials and workers into that location for a lot of reasons. So behind the 15th Street project, then, the City Hall project will start first with a big project to do work on the foundation so we can create additional room for, for elevators and make the platforms a little bit more spacious. And then right behind that will be the full-blown station improvement project for City Hall. So early 2020s, we should be done.
Okay. Thank you. We have, we're, you know, in the United States, we're fortunate, in Philadelphia, to have a rail connection to the airport. And most world-class cities do have a rail connection, but it runs, the trains run very frequently. I think ours runs, if I recall, every 30 minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is there a demand for that, or is there any way, if there is demand, to increase the amount of times it runs?
There, there have been looks and discussions about going to 20-minute service, and I think that's where we're all aiming for. We've been meeting with the airport regularly, we just had a meeting last week, to try to really have better utilization and market each other, because it is a great service. And so going forward, as we get additional rail cars, we're also, you know, it'd be tough to do at rush hour when we're running every car we have.
Right.
So as we get additional, the, the new rail cars come in the next couple of years, we'll be able to look at potentially increasing the frequency and having a 20-minute headway on the airport.
Okay. Thank you. Another question, the commercial properties you currently have in SEPTA property, are those leased on a triple-net basis?
Do you know that? Yeah.
Just for the record, when I mean triple-net, that means the tenant pays the expenses, including real estate taxes, if applicable.
Bob, are you aware?
I can get you that information, that's no problem.
Because I would suggest, I would, I mean, I think if it's for profit, you have to correct me if I'm wrong, as, wouldn't the tenant or the owner of the property be responsible for real estate taxes, if it's for profit?
We'll have to, we'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. So my suggestion is if, if that is the case, whatever leases we're gonna do going forward, you should construct them as triple-net, so that the burden of the taxation isn't on SEPTA, but on the, the tenant who's gonna use the space.
I don't think the tax would come on us, would it?
I know at, or Headquarters Building, we do have some tenants, and those tenants are directly responsible for paying the real estate taxes.
Okay. I'd just like to get a...
We'll, we'll give you a full answer.
Yeah, just give me the full, yeah, that's fine. The other question, do you have data on ridership of SEPTA? You have data, right? And do you know the total amount of SEPTA riders right now in the system?
We have about 1.1 million trips a day.
1.1 million trips a day?
Mm-hmm.
It's amazing. And what's the percentage, would you say, any idea of those who live in Philadelphia who use SEPTA? Of the 1.1 million?
We, I, we'd have to, it's probably, it's, well, it's definitely more than half, but I have to, have to give you that number.
So I'd like two data points. One is how many of those 1.1 million live in Philadelphia, and how many commute outside the city, and how many commute inside the city?
Mm-hmm.
Let me go back to your request from City Council. I think it's for 83 million, 83.5? And that request is the Philadelphia share.
And that request is the Philadelphia share, if I recall?
Right.
What is the total request of all the counties that are involved in SEPTA?
We've got that here.
For the current fiscal year, for the four suburban counties, the request is 17.5 million.
So let me make sure I understand, there's five counties involved in SEPTA, Philadelphia and the four suburban. Philadelphia is putting up 83.5, and the counties are putting up 17.5. So it's roughly, is that 101 million? Is that the request?
Mm-hmm.
In total? And so I guess my concern is tomorrow, I want to make sure that if we're putting up 83.5 million, or about 83%, 84%, that the ridership of SEPTA, of Philadelphians, represents that figure. That's what I'm getting to.
I don't think it will approach that kind of a breakdown, but we will provide that number.
Because otherwise, that's not really fair, then, to Philadelphia.
If you, if you go back, when these arrangements were struck, these formulas, there were a lot of things that were involved in negotiations.
I understand.
I'm not, I'm not really aware of all of them, but I know that there were other considerations that aren't as apparent on how those numbers would come up.
You have to agree that if, if the ridership is 50%, 60% Philadelphians, but the payment of the money is 83.5, just doesn't sound right. Sounds like the suburbs are taking advantage.
Like, you know, I certainly at face value, but I know that there were reasons that the city agreed to these percentages back before. I just, I wasn't involved.
I'd like to get to the bottom of that, though, because I don't, I don't think that's fair for Philadelphia. The question I just want to bring back is, we might want to, you might want to consider putting out a request for a proposal for master planning some of these spaces that SEPTA owns for concepts.
Agreed, agreed.
Because I think you can get some tremendous ideas, and you make it very competitive, and, you know, I think in the big picture, over the next 10 years, and think about this, the last 10 years, 100,000 millennials have moved to Philadelphia. In the last year, Philadelphia, the top 20 cities in the country, had the highest percentage of millennials move to Philadelphia. A lot of it's driven by, because we have a good tech scene, but a lot of it's driven by the low value of our real estate.
Exactly.
Of the 20 largest cities.
I just read that article, yes.
Where the lowest value of real estate of the 20 largest. But in conjunction with that, I think we could really do tremendous work on the, on the real estate SEPTA owns and offer more services to all of our citizens, especially millennials. But the other thought I have was also, do you do any kind of connection, like if I take the Market Frankfordale to Bridge Street, if I get off of Bridge Street, can I get an Indigo bike and go from there?
There are a lot of transit connections with bikes.
And you guys work together with Indigo?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And is there any kind of combination fare that works together with Indigo?
No, but I think as we implement our key solution completely, there are discussions on how to integrate, also even with the Philadelphia Parking Authority, and really work to make, you know, kind of payment be more seamless.
Okay. And, gee, there was one other question, but I can't think of what it was.
I absolutely agree with you, though, that it's a wonderful time in Philadelphia and a real opportunity right now, and we certainly are looking at keeping up with all of this, this economic and population growth, and certainly, we are reviewing all of our real estate assets for possibilities.
Okay, I think I'm good. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for all you do. I apologize to people, I know there's folks here for Community College. We're going to have to take a little break. We'll reconvene at 2 o'clock.